Hey, Michelle. I was just checking to make sure you can hear me, okay?
Yeah, really well, Mary.
All right, thanks Brad, appreciate it.
Seeing that it is seven o'clock, I would ask that our City Administrator Greg Elliott give his Zoom speech.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm City Administrator Greg Elliott. It's seven o'clock and I'd like to address a few things before Mayor Heath officially calls us to order. For much of the meeting, we asked participants other than the commissioners and staff members to mute themselves to allow the commission to have their discussions and conduct their business. That will also help minimize any background noise that may be disruptive. Opportunities for public comment will be offered at different points throughout the meeting. At those points, participants can unmute themselves and will have an opportunity to address the commission. Three-minute rule is in effect. When it is time for public comment, please identify your name and address for the record prior to making your statement. Once we formally begin the meeting, the format and structure will be the same as an in-person meeting and we will work through our agenda items as usual. All commission rules and procedures remain in effect. Talked of the past about Zoom bombing where a virtual meeting is interrupted by people who fill the screen with objectionable content. If this occurs during our meeting tonight, we will disconnect the meeting and restart after a few minutes. Attendees can reconnect via the same link. We will also turn over the video of meeting to law enforcement for investigation. Our agenda is available on our website as is the packet, which is www.adriancity.com. Thank you all for attending tonight. Mayor Heath, I'll turn it over to you.
I call to order the Adrian City Commission's special meeting for March, sorry, for May 20th, 2021. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Robyn, roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Mr. Hou.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Schreier.
Present.
Commissioner Gauss.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry. All commission members present.
Moving on to our regular agenda, Resolution R21-098 is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to act upon the resignation of the City Attorney Henigan and Associates, P L L C. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Watson.
Support, Schreier.
Are there any public comments?
Yes, Kental Cars, 110 South Locust, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I wanted to provide feedback on a few takeaways from Monday's special meeting. I would additionally thank this commission for providing the Michigan Municipal League with a training video on how not to conduct business at a public meeting. The actions by some commissioners documented collusion and premeditation to embarrass a public servant. If there was a question with respect to allowing the commission to go into closed session to conduct business, that question would have and should have been asked weeks ago or days ago. I did some digging on the MML website and just to let you know for future meetings, the MML cannot and will not provide legal advice, so an error was made in suggesting that the commission go to them for directions. The one thing that the MML does provide is reference information and the MML website. There is an OMA handbook that was published by Attorney General Dana Nelson and the following is an excerpt from page 10 of 21 with respect to going into closed session. "Per the Attorney General to consider the dismissal, suspension, or discipline of, and one of the items listed is, a public officer or an individual agent." So I think it was clear that you could have gone into closed session. I'm not a lawyer, but to me it is very clear that the city was evaluating a public officer or individual agent and that the request to go into closed session should have been honored. The commission subsequently voted to go into closed session instead of letting the decision go by the body as a whole to move forward, additional objections were made until the individual commissioners got their way. The part of that I'm still trying to wrap around my arms is the fact that the city attorney's third year in this position, and this would have been the city attorney's third evaluation. Why is it the city attorney's only first evaluation? The MML clearly states that it is responsibility of the city commission to evaluate this position along with administrators and possibly others on an annual basis. Having worked in public service for most of my career, I am fully aware of the ability of the public to FOIA public records, so it was very gut-wrenching on my part to hear a seasoned commissioner lash out at the city attorney for submitting a FOIA request for copies of their emails. It is common knowledge that the only public official in the state of Michigan whose emails are not subject to FOIA is the governor. So it makes me wonder why this commissioner would have suffered a gut-wrenching event, a gut-wrenching event, and I would encourage this person to act upon their need to resign because we need commissioners who act on behalf of the voters and have the ability to put aside personal feelings while in office. The commission is all-in when it comes to entering into a million-dollar performance contract with little or no thought of the potential outcomes. In similar fashion, they took a blind eye when it comes to the Open Meetings Act, FOIA requests, and Roberts rules of order.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
Hi, Nancy O'Connor, 1384 Harrison Place. The last commission meeting left me very disappointed with this commission. I'm disturbed by the treatment of Tamara's Henigan by certain members of the commission and I'm concerned regarding allegations made. I feel that the entire commission has failed to adequately perform their duties regarding the direction of one of their only three direct staff members. It is nearly impossible for the city, I'm sorry, it's nearly impossible for the city attorney to perform their job to the level required if the communication and directions are lacking from the body that assigns it to them. The story of the communication within the city has been a long issue. Without clear direction and communication from the commission, it only succeeds in setting an individual up for failure. I believe Tamara's Henigan did a fine job as city attorney and the reason for her resignation lies solely in the commission's hands and it is shameful. Thank you.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Want to make sure you can hear me. Am I on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry. Mayor Heath and ladies and gentlemen of the commission, Attorney Nancy Eaton Gordon, 712 Oxford Court and business owner at 160 North Winter Street. In her tenure as city attorney, Tamara's Henigan has achieved so much, too far much to be treated in this way. She's done more than necessary in good to be put in this impossible position to be forced to leave a job because the ethical rules for attorneys require it, not because of her actions, but because of the alleged actions of others. She's poured thousands of time, pardon me, thousands of hours of time into improving this city, working on a blight program to find things that work, working to fix things rather than just find people. She spearheads a marijuana enforcement program that has already earned the city tens of thousands of dollars and will continue to do so, but more importantly has kept our shops compliant and legal while sussing out improper shops. The program, which might I add, has been sought as a template for other cities across the state. She's also kept the city clear of other legal pitfalls. Her time, care, and efforts have not gone unnoticed. That is why it makes it so hard to accept that she being forced to choose to leave a job because she has to do so due to her professionalism and commitment there too. I know these struggles all too well because I'm also an attorney and I'm bound by the same rules as her. And even when it's hard on us, even when we're forced into walls, we can't go against these rules even to save ourselves. Finally, I agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Gauss's comment at the last meeting. You guys didn't realize the asset you had in the city attorney and you're going to be hard-pressed to find someone to take on a job and do such a good job for the long term. I understand an interim has been nominated, but an interim is not going to fill the role that is needed by the city for the long term. Think very carefully here, ladies and gentlemen. As the young poet Amanda Gorman said at the 2021 inauguration, "While we have our eyes on the future, history has its eyes on us. I pray that you do the right thing, not only because history's eyes are upon you at this moment, but because the decisions you make going forward impact the city and the good of this administration as we move forward." There are some commissioners here who I have full belief can do the right thing and carry forward and I give you the courage and strength to do so because you know who the sore thumbs are here. You need to do the right thing. You've already lost one of the greatest assets the city has had in a long time in trying to get things right in losing attorney Tamara's Henigan, who I'm proud to call not only a colleague, but a friend. So I pray you recognize this moving forward, that you do the right thing, that you take some self-reflection and fix what is needed for this city going forward. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, I will now ask, are there any commissioner comments?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
Go, Commissioner Gauss, go ahead.
Excuse me. This evening marks a low point in my tenure as an Adrian City Commissioner. It is embarrassing to watch as an intelligent woman of color and dedicated native of our city finds it necessary to resign in order to escape a toxic work environment that this commission could have stopped or even prevented. Instead, we turned our heads to the problem and in some cases watched while the hostilities were further perpetuated by individual members of this body. Tamara's Henigan is a good person and has been a good attorney for our city. We will miss her talents and I find it difficult to imagine who we will find to replace her, certainly not the firm from Ann Arbor who has no vested interest in our city other than to make a buck off our taxpayers. I wish Tamara's well in her future endeavors and I will continue to support her in any way that I can. Thank you.
Mayor, if I would?
Commissioner Hou, go ahead.
It took me a while to gather my thoughts to be prepared for the night, especially at the Monday night City Commission meeting. What occurred Monday was by far the most difficult thing I've been associated with since being elected in 2015. As commissioners, we often have different positions on policy, employee performance, or many other issues that pertain to our jobs. What occurred Monday night was the act of someone whose employers failed her. Tamara's Henigan was not given clear direction by the City Commission. To make matters worse, some commissioners refused to communicate with her regarding the issue they had. Is that a definition of being community leaders? Having issues with staff and failing out to communicate those issues? Do our citizens deserve more? How is Tamara supposed to improve if some of her direct bosses won't communicate directly with her? This is the main reason why I feel the City Commission failed former City Attorney Henigan. I wish Attorney Henigan the best of luck in her future endeavors and appreciate her commitment, dedication to her hometown. The past two years, the City Commission has been a well-oiled machine. We would disagree from time to time on issues, however, when we did, we did so respectfully. The past seven months, things have drastically changed. I've been a city commissioner for five and a half years and been involved in city government for almost eight and I will tell you, I have never worked harder in the past seven months than I have this past. Hours on the phone talking to my peers, trying to figure out how to deal with the turmoil within City Hall while also trying to find the root cause of the issues. As a commission, we are split on what the true issue is in City Hall. It is not a city commission's job to deal with day-to-day activities, however, we do have three employees that are direct reports to us and there is where the problem lies. The past seven months have been difficult and I'm aware the problem still exists. The City Commission is fractured and I know based on my experience that the City Commission needs repair itself and I feel like we would not be able to accomplish that feat till we have a fresh start, starting from the top. We need to heal so we can move the city forward. Thank you.
Hearing no more commissioner comments, I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Schreier. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson. Brad, Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Schreier.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R21-099 is from the City Commission. It is a resolution to rescind the authority given to Nancy R. Eaton Gordon to act as a city attorney. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Support, Watson.
Are there any public comments?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Attorney Nancy Eaton Gordon again, 712 Oxford Court and offices at 160 North Winter Street. Just wanting to confirm, the city commission had received the letter I had sent just before the meeting stating that our firm wholeheartedly removes our want to serve. At this point, we were serving at the request under Tamara's head again, due to our faith and confidence in her knowledge and understanding of the law, her beliefs in the law and how she interprets and enforces them and her ethical rules and steadfast hold to them. With her not being in the office anymore, we would not want to serve. Therefore, we voluntarily withdraw, but please pass your resolution. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Castleberry with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R21-100 is from the city commission. It is a resolution to appoint Garin Luca Miller, PC, as interim's city attorney. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Strayer.
Second, Castleberry.
Are there any public comments?
Yes, Ken Tokars, 110 South Locust, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I guess I would like to see the bid results. I'd like to know what firms you contacted, what their rates were before you approved this or asked that you table that till that information is available. I'd also like you to include what the rates were for the current attorney. I would also like the city, the city has a finance manager who should be able to say and document what the city has paid for attorney services for the past 10 years, and I believe that having this information is critical for you to make this decision before haphazardly just all of a sudden picking another attorney. When you do pick an attorney, I guess I would ask that you have that attorney take a look at that little white binder and just say a yes or no, whether it's true or not, and give the public an answer. Thank you.
Hearing no more public comment, are there any commissioner comments?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to comment.
Go ahead, Commissioner Gauss.
Before putting on the agenda an appointment for an interim attorney that I have no idea who they are, what they do, I would have thought that that would be an appropriate matter for discussion at a pre-meeting where we could talk about the various options that we have available to us. That being the case, not being the case, you know, now we're faced with someone who, you know, I heard complaints Monday night about the cost of attorney's fees and the bills that are run up. I can only imagine what it's going to be with an outside counsel who has to at least familiarize themselves with, you know, what's going on in our city. Don't know how much knowledge, what their knowledge is of the marijuana ordinances that we have. And I'm concerned about whether a firm from Ann Arbor is going to be down here appearing in Judge Shadler's court enforcing blight citations. Again, I just would like to have had an opportunity to talk about this before it was put in front of us. Thank you.
And I will, I would like to also make the comment that I have the same concern, Commissioner Gauss, and I did question that and that this is just to, you know, this is someone that is familiar. It's somebody that has, you know, assisted attorney Henigan in cases, and she's shaking her head yes, but I knew that already, and and this, you know, this is to make sure that we do have legal representation until we can have that pre-meeting discussion because that's several weeks out. And yes, we do need to decide, you know, have that discussion at that time and decide, you know, where we want to go with long-term and even interim and make those decisions at that point. But that was the explanation given to me is that just to ensure that we do have legal counsel and someone that is familiar with us until we get to that point so that we're not without any legal counsel for a few weeks.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, I know, I see you on here, John. Go ahead.
Commissioner comments.
There's commissioner comments right now, though, John.
Well, my concern is, again, we're a group. And I understand, John, I've been on the commission long enough to understand that he has defended us in some, in some specific cases, but again, we are a group, let's talk about together. Let's get it out there. We don't, we don't just look at a special mini packet and see a firm, even though what I am familiar with, I still like to have it see at the table during that discussion. So again, that's where the problem lies, is that, you know, we need to get together as a group and hammer home these things that are important, and one of the three employees, the city commission, that they report to us. Again, John is a great firm. This is not, nothing against him, but I want to have it see at the table, even in the interim level, of something of this magnitude.
Hearing no more commissioner comments, I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
No.
Mr. Castleberry.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
No.
Resolution adopted by a five yes, two no vote.
Uh, excuse me, Robin.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary. I'm sorry, Mr. Roberts.
It's okay. I'm a yes, thank you.
I put my squares closer together, so I missed.
It's all right. It's okay.
I'm sorry, let me repeat that. Resolution adopted by a, it's still a five yes, two no vote, so I counted you.
Thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
At this time, it is now time for a public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit, and for the record, please state your name and address. And at this time, John, if you would like to speak, this is the time where you can speak.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor Heath, commissioners, Administrator Elliot, and members of the staff and members of the public as well. My name is John Galouli. I'm a partner with the law firm of Garin Luca Miller. I'm based in Detroit. We have offices throughout the state of Michigan, including one in Ann Arbor. I want to thank you tonight. I understand your concerns, and I'd like to say a couple of things as well. I'm a 30-year attorney. I do have a vested interest in the city of Adrian. I am not here simply to make a buck. I have plenty of work. I have defended the city of Adrian for the past 30 years in some of the biggest state and federal court litigation that has ever hit the city. We have successfully resolved that litigation. We have done so, many of you have met me in the past. You know that I provide the city with monthly reports on absolutely everything if it's known. I have a pretty good background legally speaking. I've tried probably more cases in state and federal court on behalf of cities and any attorney in the state of Michigan. I'm not here to talk about my qualifications because I've worked well with Ms. Henigan. I continue to represent the city of Adrian right now in two cases that are currently pending in the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Michigan. We have worked extensively with Ms. Henigan without fail. I am not angling to be your interim city attorney. I was asked, based on an emergency basis, that the city of Adrian believes it should have legal counsel for things until you can have the discussions, and that's extremely important. I'm an elected official myself. I understand the rules of ethics. I understand the rules of professional responsibility. And I've had a chance to participate in your meetings and read all of your, so to speak, minutes for the last several months. We have a team that's ready to help on an interim basis. I will be billing the city $175 an hour. We will work out of our Ann Arbor office when possible to keep costs down. We will work. I am here on an interim basis to make sure that things don't go south for each of you in the city of Adrian and for those who live, work, and commute to and from the city of Adrian each day. I have a couple easy rules. I will provide you with reports as asked. I do not take questions from individual commissioners. I lecture extensively for the Michigan Municipal League throughout the state and have done so for 30 years. I report to the charter provision. I will provide each of you with answers to any questions you might have. As long as each of you knows the question that's asked, you will each receive the answer at the same time. I'm not afraid of having my work, I've always given Ms. Henigan and city officials my work, so to speak, in advance of its filing. We are extremely aggressive in federal courts.
I'm sorry, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken Tokars, 110 South Locust. I wanted to talk about the $9.6 million performance contract that we have with Johnson Controls. I am concerned about that contract. My contacts at Sensus are telling me that because of the chip problem that the city will not have water meters for 22 months. Now, this was a performance contract that the city entered into with my objection, and I have concerns that it's going to go by the wayside. I am going to continue to come to meetings. The contract calls for measurement and verification for three years. Not sure why you guys only went with three years, but if you can't get the chips for 22 months, what's going to happen with measurement and verification? The performance contract amounted to $9.6 million. Once you add in interest, I believe the full contract amount is $13.4 million. And I believe that we need to act upon this immediately or we are going to lose our positioning with Johnson, with Johnson Controls. When you guys make decisions, you got to look at what the potential outcomes were. I think it was haphazard and you even had a former commissioner Valentine who said he wouldn't, he wasn't even in favor of it because he said, I quote, "He has no idea what it's about, but we just voted on it. We didn't take into considerations what if the contract fails? Nobody has any plans in place for measurement and verification. You don't have a city person assigned to verify that we're getting the money." I did make a suggestion last week that's similar to the ambulance's monthly reporting that you require Will Sadler to do this. He knows all the water meters that are going to be replaced, and if we have a monthly or annual nut of $400,000, he should be tracking it because the low-hanging fruit are the water meters. Thank you.
Mayor Heath. Go ahead, Tamara. Sorry, I was called you city attorney, sorry.
Thank you. Tamara's Henigan, 328 Cheyenne River Jive and business owner at 160 North Winter Street. I just wanted to thank the community for their support in the three years that I was with the city. I appreciate everyone who has had positive things to say this evening. Though I do understand the concern some of the commissioners had with making such a quick decision on interim, I have full faith in Mr. Galouli and really enjoyed working with him over the past three years. And I'm certain that he will make the best decisions for the time that he is with you. And he knows how to reach me if he needs any additional information. Sorry, as we start transitioning. I also want to say to the community, for all of you who've reached out to me over the past few days, I'm so grateful for your comments, your love and your support. And I stand firm on the comments that I made on Monday. I'm a firm believer in the quote by Angie Thomas, "What is the point of having a voice if you're not going to use it when you're supposed to?" That being said, though, as you all can see, I'm on vacation and I will be taking the next few days to not do anything else with the city. But I would like to announce to the community that upon my return, I will begin working on my campaign as I will be running as a write-in candidate for this year's November election for city commission. And I intend to continue to go forward, working with the community with the same passion and vigor I have as the attorney for the past three years. And I hope that those who have reached out to me for support this week will continue to support me in that endeavor. And thank you to each and every commissioner who has been supportive throughout the years that I've been there. It's been a joy to work with those of you. Thank you.
Hello? Go ahead.
Attorney Nancy Eaton Gordon again, 7112 Oxford Court, business address 160 North Winter Street. Couple of parting comments. First, I did want to thank Attorney Galouli for his comments. Your reputation does precede you, sir. I'm sure the city is in good hands, at least for the interim, until things get sorted out. So I wanted to thank you. I do want to welcome Commissioner candidate Tamara's Henigan on her recent announcement of running for commission. I think she will do well. As a citizen of Adrian, I speak now. I must admit, I'm disappointed in Commissioner Lad Strayer's refusal at the last meeting to act as part of his duty because of his admitted personal feelings. Admitting to refusing to do part of your job specifically in evaluation of employee because of your personal feelings on how that employee has used proper legal process is not acceptable. FOIA is legally allowed under state and city laws as well as federal law. You as a commissioner know or should know by now, you can be FOIA-ed, and you need to learn how to deal with any feelings you have about that and move past them if you intend to stay on the commission. Perhaps it would not have come to this with FOIA being a last resort if certain members of the commission had not, as Commissioner Hou so aptly put it, failed their employee by failing to provide or refuse to cooperate in giving information requested so the employee could find out what her performance was or alleged performance issues were. I agree with him 100% on that. As a citizen, I'm also particularly disappointed and disturbed by the commissioner or by comments of Commissioner Karen, I mean, sorry, Mary Roberts, and some of her attitudes expressed over the several past meetings, including the most recent one. We as a city can and should expect better. This kind of pettiness should not be happening, and it definitely shouldn't be happening in a public forum to be on display. I wish you the best of luck in your search for a permanent solution to attorney. Again, Attorney Galouli, for the interim, I have full faith and confidence in you as your reputation does precede you. I pray that you commissioners, there are a few who I know can do the right thing, that you do so, not only for the city but for her citizens. I pray you the courage and conviction to stand up for you know what is right and what is wrong. Thank you and good night.
Hearing no more public comments, are there any commissioner comments?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make another comment.
Commissioner Gauss, go ahead.
You know, I said a few minutes ago that tonight was marked the low point in my tenure. And I truly mean that. But I have to tell you, I'm re-energized and reinvigorated by Tamara's announcement this evening that she's going to seek a spot on our commission. I think she'd be an excellent commissioner. I would look forward to working side by side with her. And even though she'll be running against me, I will be supporting her in any way, shape, or form that I can. Everyone knows that a write-in candidacy is a very difficult one to win, but I think if there's anyone that can do that, it's Tamara's. So I look forward to working with her side by side and helping her win the election this November. Thank you.
So I look forward to working with her side by side and helping her win the election this November. Thank you.
Mayor.
Commissioner help, go ahead.
You know, as John was going, I really wanted to keep going. So I'm going to request the HEB back, you know, or somebody from the sperm back in the first meeting in June so we can find out how this is going to work. Because again, you know, we have a time limit, but I was really interested in our process as we go forward and our communication with him and what those happens to be or his firm. So again, I understand we have a time limit, but I was really interested in what he was saying. So, you know, again, not being involved in the process on picking him, I would like to pick, you know, have him come back and explain to us what his process will be going forward as a, as our attorney in the interim.
Hearing no more commissioner comments, may I get a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, Gauss.
Or Watson.
I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Watson. All in favor, say aye.
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 Meeting is adjourned.